For those residents who don't have the attention of a hundred town hall website, who don't have it going on, we find a way to actually be engaged more to see anything that can be done in part of the town. Personally, I'm bringing back the, we have a tiny town hall in over two months. We'll find me, I don't know. So, yes, I'm in there, we can work this town hall down. You can build a bathroom there. We are not going to store that as a new town hall. I believe that will not happen. But I know all the minutes that are on that effect, all of you, just if you need, you are concerned, you want to maintain the historic integrity about this one thing, I don't think we're going to do that. What about you? Um. Let's see. Hold on. Oh, just not, look, so I'm going to, I'm going to send everybody, um, for recreation briefs, if you haven't read it. It's a screen, it's part of, um, for National Parks, I guess, National Parks Service. But I do want to go to this summer meeting, where you did approve the unit, right? And then on the agenda, if I can read into this, and in twenty twenty three, this is how we made it, just not really like it. I'm not sure what that happens around here. Okay, and twenty twenty three, um, we had a, um, the, the, the purpose of our nation board, what it, and I think that was that, I mean, and then we saw the, the, the beautiful condition of what we wanted to do the town, town hall, and we have multiple purpose. And I'm going, when I have the screen, it just looked like a town on the outside, and I think I was a little excited about that. And then there was a workshop on, uh, July thirty first and twenty three, August sixteenth and twenty three, and then a town council meeting in twenty twenty three, uh, uh, uh. During that time, it kind of went from a medium of purpose to a medium of, um, I have all the minutes, but I haven't put the timeline together. And then in twenty twenty four, there was a town hall meeting on September fifteen, ten twenty two, and a workshop on November twenty, I think that was the town share at that workshop. At that town share, I was told, we were only to consider our lives if we wanted to see the town square, and we were not to pay attention to public restrooms or even talk about them. So, I can't find in any timeline, anywhere, one of the bathrooms went from being attached to that town hall to becoming detached, and then extending beyond the town hall existing structure. That historic preservation board was a consultant, or the town, or the board is more consultant. I, I think they had a change to take with it as new design and say, except at the town council meetings, several people said that, yeah, man, come on, if I get two people, um, I don't want to change names. They go over to the meeting there. So, I, I know a lot of other people who want to speak, I just want to say, let us just be in great, there's no urgency, this is not a lonely one. No one is dining in our town sort of these, they can't use the bathroom. Let's take, um, let's do the right, donate money, find out what other gardens we're looking for. Find the best and safest place to put the public restrooms, and then look at what needs to be taken care of, we can do that as a community. Let's spend a little bit of time to developing a relationship with our community. I know the town has been a really good job of everything on the website, but it is key that's to be individual. I had a, um, real quickly, I talked in the recording, in the town stage, I said, I'm going to go with it because I might tend to mention that in the store port, meaning the town. Who is responsible? Is it the town's responsibility to get the word out about what the town is doing? Is it the town stock, is it the, is it the reddish stock to go, I would like to know, I would like to know, I would like to know. I would have an answer to that, I would have time to, to, uh, cross that. But I, some of them have to come together, and I'd wait until that, just in that, and maybe that, some of them will meet that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, does your, Evan or what?
I thought it was Yanis, but Andy.
What did she say?
I said I brought some younger residents, Andy.
Well, go for that.
Hey. My name is Evan Mar, I live at three one five, West Second Avenue, and you're standing in for my, um, we'll all have some thoughts about the bathroom situation. So, this message is from, it says, as an architectural design maker, I was at the public advancement. The best practice in architectural design is right in public bathrooms rather than concentrating on one's visual activity. This strategy is against convenience, reduces congestion, improves the overall event experience for its needs. It is also best to consider long-term advantage of design. Uh, it is possible that the town of Winnebago may need to expand the residence in the future, including them, uh, out by the library, or else it's possible that it's in, or that it's in the front, and then whenever you expand it. The argument that having that, that's a town hall, uh, being a better, or a better access, it isn't true. It depends on where the disabled person, where it will be when they want to use the restroom. Many time functions provide, uh, public aid on the indoor side of the hall. Where we're still leaving by the library to be more accessible and of course, to be a plan. In the instance, the restroom may be hidden from the entire town square where they are going to propose. Having that out by the library to offer an in-arrival way to wash and dry, and entering, and then leaving the facility. Please would not be able to see anything as they come by, and not only that, they're going to be with the board, maybe my garden, start up. Either they're proposed on, maybe the restrooms are already seen these. I've been doing training again, I've been doing existing electrical and water facilities, and re-standing building. The library area offers the same town hall, but there aren't any to leave it a little bit. I see no reason why we'd drop them, I thought more than I got. Uh, for better protection, with the town hall bathroom proposal, we're allowing the evening, light and breeze on the porch. We use the porch a lot with any some arteries, I'm kind of a big charger, block one side of the bathroom, we finish the DVD, and annual maintenance of our, some of these. For these reasons, I'm convinced the area near the library and that's, or that's a new residential location. And, uh, somebody is going to be within there, uh, in the future, for a long, foreseeable future. Uh, I do think that is something that is worth taking some time to do instead of that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Evan, uh, you just started in mind. This is recent, I'm on my, I'm at the twenty seven thirty five, I think it's, I remember I was at the, 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 um, I served the Winnebago tree ward for about fifteen years, and I'm the obviously, previously on the Winnebago historical board for about twelve years. Uh, but the five schoolhouses, Long Angela, Tom, John, Sean, Jim, um, and a few others on the eighteen eighty seven schoolhouse. We fought for that because we felt it was important to preserve it on national registered historic site. And we're here today to fight again for the preservation of our national registered historic site of your town hall. We've been collecting signatures, which I have seven pages here, uh, over a hundred signatures that we just collected in the last four or five days. I'm sure we could collect more, but the overriding, um, results were comments from people that we were collecting from. Number one, they had no idea that this sand was in place. Number two, they want to leave it alone. Oh, writing, they, they want to leave the historic town hall alone, do not attach the bathrooms to the town hall. And you'll find that in the comments here, all my copies available to the town council should be wish. Most everybody wants it out there, either next to the library or across from the Winnebago brewery. I keep hearing from some of the town council members that, oh, we don't want to impact the green space over there. Well, there's already a green space there with a drain field underneath it. You all used it for three years while we built the town offices, you had a double-wide trailer earlier, that you were utilizing that drain field. There's no reason why we can't use the current drain field or reuse the, the, the current drain field and still keep that green space where it currently is. It just doesn't make the common sense to shut a building that doesn't conform, doesn't look like the historic town hall, where you have to build a drain field over here. There was some talk about moving the nine eleven memorial to put a drain field back here to accommodate. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll take that, but either way, not sure we're going to hook in a drain field back here on the corner. So, we're asking you to listen to the residents. Again, at the town charrette that we had on, uh, eleven twenty twenty four at the workshop, we were told, talk only about the town square, do not address the bathrooms or the historic town hall renovation. I'm not sure why we were told that, um, but we were. And so there really was no opportunity to address this specific issue. And I'm asking you all to please listen to the residents. To rescind that decision, let's take some time to do a town charrette, we can talk about these issues and about the historic preservation of the town hall in addition to the public bathrooms. There are so many things that need to be done, uh, the brewery need to be redone, the, the, um, the foundation need to be stabilized. There's just so much that needs to be done in the historic townhouse. We ask you to please rescind that decision, listen to the residents, and let's preserve town hall as is with no bathrooms inside, thank you.
You interviewed me. I don't need anybody else.
Yeah.
And you did this for the.
Okay, yeah, um, I'm in Winnebago, and then we're forty twenty five, well, district. Go back to the team, and then four number backwards, but here we're going to make the frame. Coffee, we're going to, um, I'm approaching the house today, I asked for consideration that I didn't keep that law for the potential public restrooms that we've got. And I didn't keep that system, the, the, the dogs that were living in Lake Street will keep the restrooms, be acceptable to the residents, with the headlonging of to be open to the entire public, or if they're able to be controlled, whatever, in the building. Uh, there are certain sort of restricted permits, they get them launched during those times, like one of our plates or food trucks, or when we have a lot of people in town. Running that strict issue can bring all sorts of people and issues. I, I would challenge to consider the costs and other ways associated with unrestricted access, which I would never approve for our town. I see some streams, but we were in Dr. Phillips, that not only lack the circular cleanliness, and seem able to maintain, but also seem to be a gathering place for those who don't have access to these facilities elsewhere. We, our residents care about keeping it clean and safe, but that may not be reflected in all of our visitors. Or there's a saying, but not trash, on the walk, we call the areas, that is, at that point. Um, you can purchase for, or keep interactions on, as you said, that you're like, fuck, and then you can purchase a personal help system, similar to, or you can just a single town, who, that's a, provided to the residents, that, or can you? I know there are some residents who express concerns about public restrooms in town, and we, that, implementing a law system, like you do, set up a new registration to have, um, restaurants. I think you're doing a nice iteration.
Sure. Um, because we, and so we're, some clear points. So, the, the design, um, although not completely final, they, they take it into considering, I'm not, I'm not going to lock or, uh, off time versus when we have events, or, uh, they take it to the hall, um, and it just leaves one of that, I would like to give it that, and then, and then, right, maybe, uh, here, I love that, we can just sort of to wear that, and then I will also, um, promise you, maybe by my side, just as, we all, maybe a bit, I mean, similar, but if we're not being, I'm not, so it's supposed to be, we're clearly, we're.
Be sure of the town hall logo delivered on the town hall, in these, in the interiors.
It, it, it can be, like, represented.
I think the bathroom.
The mic.
But I think, here we go. So, uh, I think back there is a limitation, but wherever you put them. Do what Robert did for the, uh, lower pavilion back there. You stay in the corner, show how high it is, feel how the space goes before you admit to all the drawings, et cetera. With layout, wherever it goes, make sure you understand the volume of dealing with. That was why I did the commentary, making certain on the video. Second one that I talk about is the parking area on Seventh Avenue and Main Street next to the upper work office. Uh, right now, there's this big pile of dirt there on top of all the tree roots. There is on the other side of the tides, there are, um, pallets of wood, there's trash, there's a dumpster, there's all the electrical things, sort of the temporary offices. Uh, I'm on Seventh Avenue, being a property owner, the touch of Seventh Avenue, for me residential, what I'm. What we used to do for, for killing trees, you'd put lots of dirt in their roots. So we could then pave that area and not have the roots destroy the pavement, but that's how you kill trees. Uh, so I had a plan, this shows how I'm able to help control that space. By putting in the parking, uh, curb wheel stops, tiny wheel stops. That'll also help, we have a parking at the fence, so we don't park sideways, cook it in there and make a mess. You get a lot more cars down there if we order fences. You can keep the, uh, curbs on the north side, ten feet off the fence. And that way you can keep all the vanes there anywhere, you know, between that and the fence. Then you've got sixty-four feet, put a parking area, which is funny as well. Then you've got twenty-sixteen of trees before you get to Seventh Avenue. You put the curb stops over there and you would have a nicer spot. I mean, if you have a property and you're building something, you've got to stake out the trees around your property to make sure construction doesn't want the roots and destroy the trees. Everybody should know that, but we're doing it to ourselves. And of course, when I were in it, then the, uh, uh, company, the plan said the town should acquire all owners to prevent it deteriorate in their property with food, blighted areas. So I use the term blighted areas, not a blighted area yet, but that's what we're saying in the contract. I don't know if that area can turn into a blighted area, and then I talked to Congress, the trucks can't put the dirt on the north side because it can't turn in. Well, I did a twenty-four short building in New York, they had eight feet to do all the construction stages. You can get truck where you want to, tell it where to go. Uh, the last thing is, I think if we control this, you keep that Seventh Avenue looking. Like trees and forests and et cetera, you'll keep the value of my property, town property, nobody else's on that area. Uh, I don't know what was happening now. So that's my comment, I've given you a plan, I gave you some notes from the contract plan, and I gave you a verbal description of what I think this will be going. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And some of the standard elements?
I'm going to see my time, I was talking and I was just. I'm May Chingalani, and I live at four twelve thirty in Manhattan downtown, I'm packing for my house because we're very, very close. Um, I've heard that basketball players will use the cherry for restrooms because currently we have nowhere for them to go. Uh, I truly do not want to see anything added to Town Hall unless it's a reversion, I don't know what it's going to be there. I feel like bathrooms behind or, or right north of the library. It would not cut our green area in half. But it would still allow that openness for everybody to see where their kids are going. Um, I'm not sure where the proposed one in front of the brewery, if it was parallel to, uh, Fifth? Or was it where the old community library used to be? Kind of parallel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're trying not going for it.
Okay.
No petition there was.
Yeah.
The conversation with the president, uh, the people from the tree board, some of the members from tree board, I was the A, I was tree board, and I wanted to talk about where I could go across from the brewery. And I do a lot of parallels to the ones that it didn't judge out, considering how much that was a concern up in the building. And we've also recently lost a tree there, a pine had to come down, and the only other tree that's next to it is a camper.
Right.
Which is invasive, so it was parallel to it.
Okay.
For the discussions I've had with people, but it's not an official wrong.
Okay. I said, yes. Not here. Over there. I'm all in favor of, um, you do need facilities. Not only for the members that live here that have their own facilities, but for the people that do visit Town Hall. And come to our, and it's like our market day, and we try, so my, my feeling is that you shouldn't change the logo of Town Hall. It should be separate and away from Town Hall. Thank you.
Renee, before you sit down, for two things, um, first of all, I want to apologize for always getting your last name incorrect, I, I swear, I try every time.
I wasn't the one, but it's okay.
The, the other thing is, I, I just, I want to clarify with you, because you live right over there. Um. When we had pavilion discussions and bad, previous discussions, certainly, there was no support for that location. Are you? Are you thinking that? That's an okay location for the restrooms by themselves? And then that focus on forest could be supportive of that, I mean, I want to make sure.
We need restrooms, I don't know if we need seven restrooms, but we do need restrooms, absolutely. Having it in the middle of all the green space, I really would not care for. And I don't think that people want to see this area boxed in as such. The north side of the library is always my, my preferred area, but yes, we do need restrooms.
Okay.
And I agree.
I wanted to make sure, because, uh, I know again, that you live there, you look at that, you, you know, forestry certainly is impacted by, um. Like you said, anything that has an intent.
I don't see the guys go to the bathroom, they're using their shrooms. This is a thing.
Um, but obviously, I, you know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't, we need those, I mean, I think maybe just, oh, we might, no, we need facilities up here. I don't think adding it to Town Hall is the best use of, of where they should go.
Maybe you know, if I were to fit one of the. What's Sarah's business? I just, I'm ten S, so I know that's one thing for us.
Hi, Miss, what, first of all, let me go ahead and say, uh, everybody, not just you, because you have always been strongly involved in the campaign, I see you here, Antonia, Archie, Robert. Uh, Brad, who did an amazing job of creating the drawings, and I know people will be unsure, uh, with us. Uh, but I feel like I'm definitely very involved with the town, and I get to see you and know you in a person, basically. I think that we're gonna come, there's a path, and then it is one day, that path is gone. I'm like, hey, what happened? I feel like, you know, we did the survey, and even then we were advised not to take it into the bathrooms, this is like, everybody gave their advice on the bathrooms. And then I'm like, oh, okay, we stopped drawing everything, and then I thought the most bones, and we decided to do a survey for the people who were not able to come. The bathrooms, so I did the installation, we were talking about bringing in by the library, or bringing in on the corner, and then I come and I'm like, oh, no, no, for sure, it's been approved here. And then in the meeting, I'm thinking, who was happening to the actual Town Hall? Uh, Town Hall, yeah, so we do it by detection, with the kitchen, with the, 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 uh, foundation. And that hasn't been a topic yet, but that continues to happen, but now we need, how we're going to be renovating the Town Hall. So in my opinion, we should put the bathrooms outside, uh, and up next to the Town Hall, or everything that happens in the staff, or anybody. And I want to thank everybody for being here, being involved, because it's because we all have an opinion, so we're not always here. Thank you.
Pretty much. And you, 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 you.
The map was the match with policies that was a six hundred diameter around that. Those are the only two changes from what you have. Um, the other important thing to point out on your future land use map is the addition of Chondalock. That's actually a big part of this amendment cycle we're going through as part of now that is a part of the town, the annexation being approved. We need, we have to amend our comprehensive plan to now show Chondalock within our comprehensive plan. So they are now being shown in, in the town of Windermere and they're assigned a future land use. Of planned unit development residential, T U D residential. Which is what your comp plan as well as your zoning requires areas to be annexed and to come in that way. Because the next step for Chondalock will be. When this comes back to you all for adoption in the next three or four or five months. Will be coming forward also with the rezoning of that property on a P U D zoning then to set up all the standards and requirements to Chondalock so that'll have everything in place. So this is that first step of taking care of that. There's a three hundred foot and then a six hundred foot, it was actually two. In the transportation element, um, really no significant changes. We did reference the current long range transportation plan with Orlando Metro. Um, because as we all know, our traffic issues are regional. And so that coordination, I know that you're the coordinator there. On that, that's important that we maintain that coordination. So what we do to really cement that in our comprehensive plan. Is we adopt by reference their long transportation plan. So we're working together with them. On those issues. Also, what we did is go in there and we added some references to, to golf carts, you know, when we talk about. Um, potential improvements and things like that. Cause before it was said bike pad. So we added a reference to golf carts. Within the transportation element. Yes, sir. Uh, housing element, uh, really no significant changes, I believe in the housing element. I will just address so often maybe comments or questions about why did we talk about affordable housing? Why did we say we were going to encourage it? We have to. And, and we, and actually we do in some. Circumstances, cause we do allow accessory dwellings, which is a. Way that you can provide opportunities. Um, but a lot of that language you see in there is things we have to have in there based on the state. Reality of us here, as you all know, is our land costs and land prices don't make that very viable. To happen and we have no control over that on land. Uh, so really no, I don't think any significant changes in there. In infrastructure, the, the ones that I want to point out are, um, again, we had to update the level of service. For water and sewer services, um, because Orange County changed it. And we utilize Orange County utilities, so we're matching them. And also we do this, this planning that we're doing for water extension and sewer, sewer function. Um. The other important change in here is one of the changes in state law. So there was a change to state law about two, three years ago. That says that in a, in a local government, if we have an area of at least fifty lots. That have a density of septic tanks of fifty septic tanks or more per acre. Then that local government has to do two things. First, they have to. Do a feasibility study to determine how to get sewer to that area. Secondly, the local government. Has to analyze the capacity of a wastewater plant that served that area. So. Fortunately, not fortunately, we don't have any of those areas in the town. We don't meet that criteria. We have, I've run the analysis. We, we don't have anywhere in the town where we have fifty lots or more or less than. With more than, um, fifty septic tanks per acre. So we don't, we're not required to do that, but we are required to have that policy in our plan. Meaning we just monitor that all the time. Um. So I'm not, um, infrastructure, that's, that's the main one I wanted to hit with you all tonight. On conservation. I think that's where this one is, is we added also new policy there. Related to activities that we're doing as required by Florida statute, the public works, is working with our lakes consultant. Uh, coordinating with F D P, Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the South Border Water Management District. On reducing nutrient loads into the public chain of lakes. That's a requirement that all of us local governments are under. And so, uh, Tanya and her group is working with our lakes consultant to help meet those, that criteria. That we have to do, but we have to reference that as a policy. Within our town. Recreation open space, no significant changes, um, intergovernmental coordination, no significant changes. Uh, capital improvements element, um, you'll see in there, there is an updated five year capital improvements plan, uh, that Tanya did provide to me. Public work, so that is your current five year capital plan. We do have to adopt that as part of our comp plan. Public school element, really no significant changes, other than you'll see in there, we had to update the people capacity data for schools within our area. And as you can see in there, all of our students are actually. Have capacity available to some surprise. But they do. Um, and, and a lot of that is driven by the interlocal that the town has with the school board and the county about how we manage school planning. So really no changes. And the private, private property rights act, no changes of that. That's an element that's required by the state of Florida that we all have to have. And it's basically four real proof statements that they, and what they just say, every action that the town takes. That it has to first look at. Private property rights of its residents. Doesn't say you have to do anything, just said you have to consider it. As part of that. So those are the highlights that I like to present. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from you all. And again, Mary would be a public hearing for the public here tonight as well.
Sounds good. Thanks Brad. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? But he didn't. But he didn't talk about the school capacity and it is. There's excess capacity and then maybe using. Features in classrooms.
And I could tell you, actually yesterday I received a call from a planner in Orange County. They're calling all jurisdictions. Because the thorough updates were twenty fifty plan on the county, they got hit very hard by the school board. So his question to me was, has the town of Windermere ever been. Objected to by the school board with anything that we've done in terms of development? I answered, no. Never run into them, but we don't have large scale development.
Thank you Brad. I don't think we have any questions at this time, so we will, um. Hear any public comment at this point. The rules are the same. I'm just going to set the podium to the short. Name, address. This is you, sir.
How you doing? David Chard, ten twenty seven. Um, I just want to make sure, I think it's in the air still that the. Um, agreements we have on the Lake Bessie settlement is still included in this. Now that we're adding in golf carts and recreational facilities. I want to make sure. That, you know. We don't have a free for all. Thinking, you know, golf carts can go where they shouldn't go. So I just want to bring that up and make sure that's. Accounted for in this latest iteration.
Mayor, I can, I can confirm that. Yes, we, we still reference those. Judgments in the parks and recreation on the, for both Lake Bessie and Lake Damm.
Thank you, sir.
Trusman Myers, twenty seven thirteen, trial placement in your Florida. You referenced the, um, V A P S plan. For going off, um, septic tanks and onto, um, sewer system for the town of Windermere. I noticed at the last meeting. That there was a sewage lift station proposed. For the northeast part of the parking lot at the Windermere Recreation Center. Um, I definitely do not want to see a sewer lift station. Right there in the parking lot of our most beautiful park. In the town of Windermere, the Windermere Recreation Center, and if you all noticed that in your packets last month. But wanting to do a deep dive, I was shocked to see, there's a very large sewage lift station prepared. Right there for that parking lot. Uh, I think that's a huge problem, number one. Why would we want a sewer lift station that is noisy, smelling right there in our most beautiful park? At the Windermere Recreation Center Park. I want to bring that to your attention, especially you, Mandy. Since it's your side of town. And Tom, um, and those of us who use that beautiful park. Number two, why would we want to chance? A sewage lift station. If something were to happen leaking right into Crescent Lake. That parking lot has a ramp. For boats to go right into the canal there, right there on Crescent Lake. So that would be number two concern. I think there's a better area to put a sewage lift station than in the parking lot. At our most beautiful Windermere Recreation Center Park. And I'd like you to please revisit that. And choose another area for this sewage lift station along Park Avenue, other than. The parking lot of the Windermere Recreation Center Park. Thank you.
We, we haven't visited that at all, other than to review just the land increases, so. I think we're ways away from that, but I appreciate. So, um. And I think there's. More than one legislation, so the legislation will definitely be on the top of the, when the time comes. So a couple procedural questions. Um. So it looks to me like item A and B are, are the same.
Um, so, so mayor, what, what we need you to do is, sitting as the local planning agency as you are now. Have a motion to recommend. Town council to, to transmit this conference.
During. This session.
During this session as you sit as the L P A.
So is it one or two?
There'll be two public hearings. You're gonna do this, you'll do this motion, hopefully it'll pass. You'll adjourn as L P A, then you'll re-adjourn as town council, hold a public hearing again, take another motion to actually transmit it.
And we hope you vote the same way.
Sure we got that. Okay, so within this section, we're gonna approve it and then we're gonna close and reopen again.
We're gonna make a motion, motion to recommend approval.
I'm sorry.
Motion to recommend, well, recommend whatever you'd like to do, approval.
Yes, mayor, I'll make a motion to recommend approval for a conference.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by council. To have a second even. Uh, no additional questions, comments or concerns, council? We begin voting with councilperson needs.
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Alright, so now we're gonna close our. Right, we'll close our town of Windermere local planning agency meeting at seven oh three P M. We'll reopen our town council. Um, Windermere Town Council meeting at seven. Then. We're gonna do the. As, as council, right?
Yeah, you'll hold a public hearing as town council, then make a motion to transmit to states. Yeah, what you'll do now is as council, you'll open a public hearing. Close the public hearing. And then make your motion to transmit.
Gotcha. Alright. So we close our council meeting at seven oh four P M, we'll reopen. Our, um, town of Windermere local planning agency meeting at seven oh four P M. Hang on, it's just a public hearing.
Public hearing of your town council.
Yeah, you're, you're still a town council.
Yes. Did it again.
You, you closed as the L P A, and now you're a town council.
Now we're in town council.
So now we do a public hearing.
Okay.
As town council.
Alright, we close our town council meeting at seven oh four P M. Open a public hearing at seven oh four P M. If anyone would like to make any public comment, we may do so at this. See none? Close our public meeting at seven oh five P M and reopen our Windermere Town Council meeting at seven. Council looking for a motion, uh, to approve transfer. Mayor pushing a pretty successful, uh, Windermere conference. Hey, motion by councilperson Dan, second by councilperson David. Thank you very much. Appreciate you standing with me on that. It seems so easy, I'm gonna look at it, but then we're, we're. Alright. Next up is client items, uh, for public hearing as well. So we have ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero three. This is a noise from permitted construction. This is our, uh, second reading and public hearing, so we're gonna do this one more time. Close our Windermere Town Council meeting at seven oh five P M. We'll open a public hearing at seven oh six P M. Um, and this is, uh, for public comment on ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to noise permitting construction activities. Amending article nine, division nine point zero zero point zero zero. Section nine point zero zero point one zero. Of the town lands development code and type of exemptions to revise sections twelve and thirteen. Related construction and demolition activities to provide for specific days and hours to allow construction and demolition activities. And to prohibit construction and demolition activities on Sundays. Town of certain holidays providing for severability, profication and an effective date. Any public comments on this, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty five point zero three, leash list? See none. We will close this, our hearing, our public hearing at seven oh six P M. We will have a meeting here as town council at eight and seven oh six P M. And council on the information.
Nice to go through.
Motion to approve. And hold a second. Any questions, comments or concerns, council?
Any question?
Yes.
The definition of a permitted hearing. So does that mean you have a building permit? What, um, what, what is it permitted? Around, that's, that's.
Yeah, the intent is you have an active building permit.
Okay, so this doesn't, the intent of this ordinance isn't to. Cycle D I wires on.
Correct.
You know, resurfacing their table or whatever in your garage.
Right, they would just fall under the general noise ordinance, they would follow this.
Generally permitted, a building permitted construction project normally done by commercial.
Here in Windermere, we're about fifty fifty owner builder and contractors, but yeah. Yeah, but, but they'll have a issued building permit, permit number. An active building permit, or in some cases, a site permit, depending on what's happening. But it wouldn't impact, from only just doing renovations or repairs to their home, it does not require a building permit.
So now we're ready to add the term commercially permitted. Can you, can we tweak that at this point? Or we have to start over?
We can add clarification within the body of the ordinance itself. But reminder though, that this ordinance is really, has already been in place. The only thing we're adding is the underlined language. So it's. Where, where we're, are you looking at line thirty one, correct? Okay, so we have issued a development permit. That language is already existing. That I mean, not that it couldn't use clarifications, but it's been in existence for quite a while. Or we can add as defined in some, another section.
Stephen, I see back there, I had a whole, I had a whole public hearing for it.
Just one comment. I noticed that most illegal building goes on this town, goes on Sunday. They build things all over town, pay things that are not permitted, Sunday, cause nobody's watching.
It's part of, I mean, that, that, this is part of it as well as. As the, the noise issue. Good. Alright, any additional questions, comments or concerns? Alright, we begin voting with, uh, the person with the smallest workshop in town. Yeah, I lie only. We fired up that song, and the community workshop, I don't know if anybody wants to buy.
On Sunday, exactly. Only on Sunday.
Yeah, the agenda on Sunday. Alright, number five, this is, uh, old business, uh, this is a, since I am the, this is a motive, well, this is not a motion, but it. It was a discussion, uh, to possibly have a motion to rescind, uh. A motion to rescind the address by council member Randy Gaines regarding the town hall restaurants. Proposed, move up, I'll let you take it.
I mean.
Your item, so you go for it.
Okay, so basically, um, I had, I was put back on the agenda, that happened in, uh, March, and then we had the election, then we had. Towns members out. So we pushed it to May because I had still been getting a lot of. Um, you know, feedback from residents about wanting to have it in another location. And, you know, you come home and speak tonight. And they started their petition and are continuing to work on getting more signatures and completed, so. Um. I did speak with Robert, uh, last week, we were putting it officially on the agenda. And there were two options that we could do. One is. You know, talk about it, not have a motion to rescind if we did that. And we did decide we were wanting to maybe. Motion to rescind later, then Robert would still be under official direction of town council to be moving for the bathrooms in the existing location. Um. And he would still be basically moving forward with that and sending the. The motion to rescind, it gives us the option to rescind it, if we want to look at other alternatives and not continue to spend money on it. While we take time to see feedback. And I went with that one because that's the one that would save us money and that's what council is going to do. And then. Her investments.
Give me one second.
Sure.
We have items for council. Normally not a problem, but tonight it's a bit. Um, if we give the staff and staff bring it up first. All the fun, just firm stuff. Alright. So, um. So we've heard from councilperson Haynes and her thought process on adding this item to agenda. So, at, at this point, the ball's in your court, because you can figure where they can work. Or, you know, based on.
I mean, I made the motion to rescind the vote in December tenth for the item of the bathroom location only. Not the other items that we discussed. So that we can, uh, reach out and get more feedback from the residents and. Consider other alternate locations. Based on what we heard tonight.
Council, you have a motion to rescind by councilperson Haynes, we have a second.
So is there any discussion?
Yeah, you second.
I second.
Any second, uh, councilperson. Alright, the floor is now open for discussion, council.
So during the historic preservation board, we had a discussion as to what the intent of the December tenth motion was, looking at the. The agenda item, it says the staff is seeking council direction on the project phasing and next steps. There was a diagram within that. Um, that showed potential locations for the, um. For the restaurants, but I was unclear after reviewing the action. But also whether that was the approval or the construction cost. And faking the word of. And I think, if I remember correctly, and I've slept since then, so I don't, don't know very clearly. Um. You know, we had a discussion of potential alternate locations at that time that we were gonna review.
Right.
Um. So it's my belief that. Rescinding this won't solve that issue or won't move us forward. I do believe we should look at alternate locations after what we've heard tonight. Um, and do some cost estimating to validate, and I think we can have. An architect look at it for A D A compliance at both locations. Um. And estimate the points.
Any additional?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not agreeing on that, you know, I think we need to take, if we're looking at other spaces. Take a hard look at. You line aside, how many trees we're gonna take out. Where's the drainage field action, then go call the setup, call the. The second guy and kind of go, okay, this is how good it's gonna happen. It's how many square feet we need, so how many trees are we gonna lose? No matter where it goes. Um. The whole, you know. We listened to an architect that we hired that was supposed to be the absolute best in historic preservation. And that's who we followed. We hired him because he was recommended, when, did it go to H P V first? So H P V reviewed it, recommended hiring this architect to do this for us. I'm just come now, are we just wasting money hiring architects? Because. We change everything they, they, they give us. Um. I think we definitely need to look at putting bathrooms around. I think we need to take a hard look on who, who we hired to draw up a bathroom. Um, I don't think we need a, a historic preservation specialist. Um. I know a lot of confusion out there with the rules with. Historic preservation. Um, I know three or four people that read the same rules and they get three different perspectives of what's really it says. Um, but I think we also need to have faith in the people we hire. Going forward, um, suggest some changes for this building itself. Okay, I'm not saying we're. Changing everything, I'm just saying, when an architect brings up valid points and he says it's right. We kind of have a little bit of faith. Uh, that he doesn't know what he's doing, cause we hired him based on your. Your recommendation. That he was the best. Um, so that's a little disheartening. Um, when we keep getting this, everybody's wrong. No, I'm sorry, um. So. In us up here, follow direction. By professional and our town residents. So. You know, I, I, we need to get clear direction. Um. Cause I hate doing things twice. And it's getting more. Getting tires. Um. But yeah, I think if we're gonna do this. I, I. I think we need to really look closely at everything. Okay? Good?
My turn?
Yes, sir.
I love the process, um, Joe and Grace, thank you for. Being involved. I know everybody else who did, I love the process. I did agree with Andy, those who seriously consider without next day, but. I think the residents had more than an architect recommends and the department had four, so I'll listen to architect, I think their advice, but. I care what the residents pay more than a paid architect, which is myself, but I do take that into consideration of what you're wrong.
I'm not saying that your opinion's not right, I'm saying that we're talking about rules and rules of what we specialize in. Yeah, that's what I, other than age, I would, I would, I'm sorry, but I don't know what we're talking about these rules. And. One more woman said one thing, said this is what it says. And the next person says, no, this is what it said. It's like talking to a lawyer. You didn't have a pretty.
I don't even know.
So, so, but yeah, you're right, maybe do what you want to. Um, if I want to be residential, residential. So we had. All access. From all that roads to the residence. Um, I'm not gonna bring this up again, but I do agree with, um, just golf cart parking over there, so bar parking. We live there, I know a couple of residents far left, but we live, and that is crazy highway. We're working, I get it, we're gonna block off, you know, this part here, or you know, uh, the thing you do out there, but. Whatever it takes to keep residential, residential. Is what I support. Um, whether it's there, and I did vote to put it there, I didn't realize it was gonna be. So objectionable to people. And I told Jonas, I'm not gonna die in that wall, I don't, it doesn't make that big a difference to me whether it's there or over there. The wall, I'm gonna die in this, and we keep residential, residential. And by putting it over there, it does, it doesn't prevent anybody from. Coming into this direction or whatever. Um, more green spaces with the overarching, hey, everybody was. That, he, like, his green space, there's always one here and there, so more green space. Um, it's pretty impact, I don't know yet, and I agree with Andy, you might even look at that. Also through Brad, or whoever said, I think it was Bob. Somebody said, go out and put up stakes and then people really see what it looks like, so you get birds out of view of it. Um. Yeah, hundred and ten signatures, yes, that's a lot of that. It's not just a hundred and fifty, it's ten in my, I mean, a lot of people took to do that. Cause I did it myself at one point, instead of you guys, so. I, I think that, my idea. We should look at it harder, with smaller locations. And this time. Really have a, maybe one more shred on it. And stay it out, look at it. And come to finding reasons, cause I do think we need bathrooms down there. I don't think we need to have a twenty four hour day in bathrooms. But I do believe in you, not just the people that bounce forward to the residents. But I do believe in you, not just with people that bounce and go forwards with the residents, but. Or we miss that we actually like in town, in downtown. You know, food trucks, all business down here, so. I have to say, very well done. And I'm looking forward to see the next step.
Yeah, oh, well, I didn't know anyone was saying that. So I did just wanna say something, I mean, I completely agree with what you're saying about, you know, I didn't know that we hired a special architect. Um, it was before I was on council, so, and I'm sure it became a pretty tense. So, I mean, the one thing I would say is that, you know, we do have the option of re- reaching out to Alicia Gold, which, um. Tom has reached out to before with the state store office. You know, and maybe we can have a meeting with her or council members to be included on it. To hear it straight from the horse, not from the state. What they think is acceptable, what they don't, for whatever we do with the town hall, as far as that goes. Um, as far as the trees, I think it, it's already on the tree board's agenda to talk about on Thursday. And the tree board has their, um, their own arborist that they hired, that they trust fully, you know, giving them advice on, you know, possible locations. So it is on the agenda for tree board to talk about, and those are all things that we can utilize in town that is no cost to the town, relating to our arborists as a bit. But we have our tree board that can consult in that regard.
Yeah, but if you guys are gonna talk about it, we need to get kind of a building size and then rental size.
Absolutely.
They're talking about it without that, then.
Well, it was.
It'll, it'll, it'll fit. And then they, then we look forward and go, oh, hold on, it's not. And because I've done projects where it runs into the drainage field issue, they down that road before, and it's painful. Um, so that would be my biggest concern is getting that part, because even. Across the street, when we did admin, that's always the big question, they never get answered in the front.
Yeah, something crazy.
It's going, okay, where are we gonna, I think we have plenty of land to make it flat, I'm not worried about grades and all that kind of stuff. Not a concern.
Right.
It's about. Where is it going, how many trees have we been upset?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and I think this is just preliminary discussions of possible locations, but we, we lost a couple of trees. And our, our arborist was looking at, you know, trees and found that we need to move back and need smart, because we have a lot of trees that are. Aging out, so, um, but yeah, no, I completely understand, and I actually reached out to the public, public department to ask some questions about the subject. So that maybe I'll get some information by Thursday, but yes, this is preliminary statement. We should go to one of their boards, especially again, save money. And maybe, maybe have a meeting with Shippo or stuff. Or a student, where they could be present. If they're, I'm sure they're probably going to, they are, but employees also pay by the tax dollars they're saving, please.
Mayor, I mean. Um, as far as public input, this has been discussed with HPV seven times. It's been public workshop six times, and in front of town council, five. Total, total of eighteen public hearings on this, or public meetings. We've met with Shippo probably three or four times, and that's been documented as well. So. We, yeah, we just see direction of where you guys want it and we'll put it where.
And, and that's gonna be my next comment, so all these are, this is all great input, but you're gonna have to be a lot more specific for staff. Um, cause quite frankly, it gets confusing. And. And have to give specifics, and probably gonna have to give up a budget. Because I don't think anybody's gonna price out pretty. For free, um, so. That's, if, if that's the direction that council is moving. We need to send that motion and give, uh, councils or give status in very specific direction.
And Mayor, I mean, we, we hired Tom Price because this is, is such.
Right.
So we didn't wanna have just some architect, one that was dedicated to historical structures. Make sure that we're doing everything correctly and not lose, uh, significance of town hall.
Also, if it's just a matter of site, or something like that. You know, those are things that can be adjusted currently. If it's more than that, again. Problem. I also really remind. Council again. That. Especially with, with site. Uh, people have official sites, but let's say over by the brewery site. You know, the way that concerns me greatly about that particular site as we move forward here. Is that if you, two things. Number one, half the town was rather clear, if you didn't really prefer anything over there, pretty strong, my recollection, by the way, and not beginning a million dollars back. The other thing that is my concern about that is if you, and I appreciate you printing this out, I think, if you look at this. And, and I'm sorry that, uh. King Murray didn't stay, it's her mom's councilperson, I know she's considering being a councilperson. And this area over here, so basically from. My finger to this direction. Is pretty much open space with the exception of the Calhoun Road. In my mind. No matter what we do downtown. That's for our kids to figure out. That's. That's their legacy portion, we've, we've done our part. Um. Now, if they want bathrooms there, I can say to weigh in, but, but my thinking is that, one day. They're gonna be up here, and it won't be long, and they're gonna have very specific things that they would like to do. And I would like to leave that as a empty palette for them to do whatever the next generation would like to do. So if you guys wanna consider something, I would go between that and the library site. The, um, current, the site by town hall over the library site. That's just my opinion, I feel really strongly about it. I just don't think that we should plop a building down, with all that open space now that it is open. And, you know, kind of mess it up for something else down the way.
I agree that if we're going to move it, that library site should be the primary consideration that we're gonna go.
I could tell you, I mean, like, the alternate site by the brewery is a nonstarter, so why, why put it in grand self? I think my concern, even with the library site, is ADA access, the requirements for.
Lighting ADA is.
Lighting, the art service park. Doable, because the, there is a cost estimate in the, in the, uh, agenda packet. It was sixteen percent overage over the cost of the, the restaurants here, I think that's one. I think we're still gonna have some issues with parking, paid parking, um, for ADA requirement, that's what I want the, the architect to look, look at. I mean, we can do a real quick ADA assessment and have an answer fairly quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I believe there, I think the same ADA requirement is required for library. And I don't feel like that that's. Much, you know, much, this is the two ways maybe the library's gonna fly, but I don't know, so.
But I think the library, that's, I mean, the difference in the library is, not, anything is possible. I'm not trying to be naive there, they have their own parking. With accessible parking, rant that goes right to the.
Yeah.
You know, um, so there are some differences, but listen, they're not, not saying those are insurmountable.
Right.
But again, if. If we're gonna, if council wants to pump the brakes on this. Once it, we, we just gotta give staff specific instructions and direction, because it's not fair.
I, I. I didn't like, um.
I'm sorry, I thought you were just, like, just.
I need to make sure I don't, you know, say the efficient thing. Um, I have a problem, because this is a million dollar burden. It all works, that is all over, and, you know. What happens since we voted the money as the whole phase of town hall renovations? Now we're putting halt on the town hall renovation because the bathrooms was the first phase. So now we're behind on everything else. Or are we moving the money and doing something else first, because that was the little picking fruit that was easier than to do? Um. I'm just curious now, where are we standing on that?
Well, that was one of my major concerns about the current motion on the table, is resuming the, the December tenth action is that we remove the phasing. I don't wanna change the phasing on, uh, exterior renovations for phase two, nor do I wanna change phase three, um, redoing the, the patio off that. You know, after walking around and, you know, exploring, I. I didn't realize how poor it's near here, it's.
Let's go to the wrong with.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I don't think that the phasing can change at all. We may pump the brakes on phase one, but phase two and three, I stand corrected.
I agree that, I don't, I don't feel like, but again, you know, you talk about the pavilion, and the pavilion, I know it's a source of envy for a lot of people, but. The reality was that it worked because people mostly give it a hot one. We really got through to, I get it, we gave a million dollars back, I've heard it every town council meeting since then. But the reality is that we gave a million dollars back because we did the money. So whether we build this here or there, I don't think we should rush it based on anything if residents couldn't like.
That's what I'm saying, but, but residents do want bathrooms, I think that's pretty clear.
And so I don't, I don't wanna, you know, back this up on phases because they want bathrooms.
Yeah, I agree, it's, we're moving forward under the phases, it's still over break to back. I'm just simply.
Well, with the exception of, I believe that. Somebody corrected my wrong, I believe the funding stage, because. One of the things, when we gave those dollars back, I kind of, you know, here, that's right, I don't like to say it, but I do, because. It's important, it's not only to be sent a million dollars back, we now have to come out of pocket for another five hundred thousand. Um, after. For the other ones down, so now, we've got a double situation, right? So we have, we do not have the full dollars, and hence I believe we phased it over two or three budget years to make it work. Um, so we wanted. One of the objects of moving this forward is that we got it done in budget. We took our five hundred, the few bathrooms, and we're in the next five hundred, so if we could set a base, we probably would avoid it. Um, from.
This is, this is very, which is due to the garden October, so we're only a few months from it.
Phase three is interior renovations, they'll be in the, they'll be off here, I had a sign when it was October twenty-sixth, they're October, so.
Eagles, you're, you're absolutely correct, it was called, just. Which is how we do, you know, that's, it's how we like size, it's how we, you know, it'd be a pound of, you know, a pound of dollars.
So my question is, do we, are we skipping to phase two and three? So that we start in time and missing the bathroom altogether? For me, to stay on track, the question, so now we're, we're, we're back.
Let's learn if it's money and money can answer that, because I believe that. I believe that. If the preliminary work, a few million dollars, we figure, yes, does the bathroom really, so it's just that. John, as you always say, calm, I'm gonna call you, vote in front, come to the voting, I'm gonna take a question ahead. Since you and Frank really beneficial, so.
Yeah, sorry, we're a little.
See, um. We haven't done the preliminary work on the exterior planning, uh. For this particular building yet, as we, and working on the back, right, is that, is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement to say that we looked at this in full context with HPV and said, hey, what do we wanna do with everything with town hall? And then do the prior, prioritization of council. With resident input, we phased it based on what was the most important things for people at the time.
Right.
Now, remember, this was in twenty twenty-three. Here we are in twenty twenty-five, if we had gone through it. We probably would have had the bathrooms built, and we'd be in the town hall renovation. The longer we wait, the worse this building gets. And so there we are, and so that's all we're ever been asking, is just clear direction for you guys to tell us what to do. Uh, and anything changes?
I thought we had your best. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So the question was, did the architect give us means and methods for the exterior of the building? Absolutely. And that was all coordinated with Elena from Shippo on certain things that we would look at and how we would re- redo it. We agreed with Shippo that, hey, it would still stay with the same trim and the same park pine and the same novelty siding and everything else, and. We looked at areas that were rotten and we did major photo, you know, recommendations. By a little bit more than we did three years ago, so now we might have to go a little bit higher on the restoration of the building, but. All that was photo documented with Tom. And I think to the point tonight is that we are gonna switch locations for the restaurants, we probably wouldn't use him as the architect. Which is, when you look at your packet tonight, you'll see that we did have, uh, a little ad for an outside architect that we probably would. Use a historic architect to do it, because now it's just.
Well, you wouldn't have to, right?
No, we wouldn't have to, because it's totally disconnected.
E- exactly, and that's smarter. Um. I think the other question that's being asked. Is that. If we. We, uh, take, take some additional time to decide on a different location for the bathroom. As. Would we go ahead, would we jump and start, could we jump and start the exterior of the building, or would we just keep it as we have it?
Got you to that, Zach, that to me is really a question for Robert, I know, I don't know the budget.
Why?
All I do know is that, when we came and reprioritized the phases, the bathrooms were the number one thing, which is the biggest need that we have. Time got away from us now, and so now the town hall and the bathrooms are just equally important, so there you go.
And I feel like a lot of the last, pretty all, and that's the problem, and now, you know, do we just skip the bathrooms and, and work on town hall?
It's a great game of kick the can, that's what we're playing. So I mean, you know, we're gonna play kick the can, so it's really just about at this point in time.
Yeah.
The town appropriation, are they single year capital appropriation or required?
You from the state or best?
No, for our.
No, we can carry over money. Yeah, we can put it in reserve.
Twenty ninety-three has been appropriated in twenty twenty-four for the restaurant.
Listen.
In FY twenty twenty-five, the phase two is appropriated. Those can carry over for. For developments in the following years without losing those funds.
It's, yeah, it's our money, so.
So October one, there would be that time without.
Yeah, so it's not a use it or lose it.
No.
No, no, not at all, I can do it.
Yeah, I have to try to clarify that, because you know, it's different being, you know, operations and maintenance.
And more just how we feel.
Yes, so we can use it any way we want.
We can, and, and listen, that's a hundred percent, remember. Uh, the, there's two that's good at that, because that can also get used another way. A disaster happens and a human doesn't exist anymore, and the next thing, no, you're already in your reserve. You know, I, I'm just, you know, I'm not trying to be dramatic, I'm stating that. Sometimes, you know, we've, we've sat up here when we didn't have. I started with three hundred, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in reserve, Robert. We started. Yeah, it was pretty low. So, you know, we worked really hard to make that situation more stable, but we are seeing things. You know, just big picture, I'm seeing things in Tallahassee that while they reported this session. Typically what happens is they come back next session, and those are things that are gonna control or possibly control how the municipality operates and what they're allowed to. Um, spend money on, so things like that, now hopefully that's, you know, really dramatic, but. I, you know, who does? I mean, there's things that have happened that I would never have predicted, so we like to have that money. If you want the project done, you're gonna get it done. Um, if you wanna move it, better jump on and do it, give staff very specific instructions on what you want. Um, cause there's, it's, you know. I don't want anything to, um, we promise or you just go, you shouldn't do that.
I, yeah, I, I agree.
I think we all.
You know, it makes us, I think I felt like wasting time, you know, we're all once here and stuff, we're hard to get, but we don't. And so I just feel like the more we have to keep going back, since we're not where we're generally made, so, you know.
Agreed.
Just, just keep that in, in thoughts, we.
We, we agree with you, this is the least expensive time to change the facility, a hundred percent, right? So with that being said, I think we need to take a month. Do a review, figure out what the floor plate is and the site and what the library. Figure out what the true cost of it is, including ADA requirements. Even people are saying, people are saying, oh, you don't need to do that, it's, you know, the, the library needs ADA, the town hall needs ADA. Even people are saying, people are saying, oh, you don't need to do that, it's, you know, the, the library needs A D A, the town hall needs A D A. We don't know if that means A D A, so put that.
Yeah. Well, there, there could be some jobs for. And you're right about it will not be any cheaper.
I have to agree with, uh, I think everybody's saying the right thing, and I don't think anybody's taking the personal, I. I do think that we have a great architect, I do think the design is compatible, I do think that it fits in with. With the historic part of the town, I see maybe that I'm standing with enough, enough public outcry. That I could tell me that this just made the somebody a hasty put that real quick.
I mean, Joe and I had a conversation, Grace and I had a conversation, and I was for it. You know, relooking at it as long as it was within ten percent of the cost of the rest of the material, I'm okay with that. You know, cause i- if it is, it's, it's a wash, but if it comes out to be forty percent more expensive because there's. Ton of A D A requirements or a ton of lighting requirements or a name requirement, you know, I'm not sure I'm in favor of doing it, you know, so.
You think we can find that happen every day, do you need more time?
You know, if you do a single line, you can quit kind of off system and add a third type of.
So, so assuming you have a whole. So. If not, but. So from a, alright, so from a procedural standpoint at this juncture. Um. In, in order to do that, I believe that we still need forward, let me make sure I'm correct, we still need percentage of motion to do that.
I would say no, that you would table. Correct me on this, and.
Come back.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be more than thirty days because again, with the next town council meeting.
Well, we wanna do it right.
Yeah, in addition to that, I mean. I'm gonna have to hold probably another two public workshops. Um, cause I'm sure the people on forestry are gonna have some comments as well.
A hundred percent, that's why, you know, we did have some purpose of being forced, but not a lot. Counselor.
I was gonna say, let's figure out. What exactly the council wants and then we can figure out what needs to be fixed from past motions, if anything. Um, pieces and parts or portions.
Once we know what we want, we'll determine the potential remedy, right?
Exactly.
Fair enough, alright, so. Is it fair to say what we want? Help me think through this, guys, so what we want to do is we want to table. This particular. Agenda item tonight. I'm gonna give staff sixty days, so I don't think there was really real estate to do it right.
Well, we haven't even given enough time for like tree board and other committees to. They need to look at.
I, I think we do a quick look. Figure out what the requirement is, whether it puts something there before we do side comment or anything. Cause if it's ninety percent more expensive, it's gonna be a nonstarter, it's a little piece.
I have one more question regarding the cost for what you say. So in December, we said. That what was presented to us, that the cost habit over here was four hundred and ninety three thousand. Now, number has changed two times since then. Without. I didn't know why or how. Or any explanation. But and then in the most recent one, it was like over there, it's more expensive with the little process that came up with. No plan or, or drawing or anything to go on. And, and all of a sudden that one's gonna be four hundred fifty thousand and this one. Is all of a sudden going to be three hundred and some thousand. So I don't understand why the numbers change.
So you're gonna, because I'm. My understanding with those costs of plus estimates. Um, based upon the architect, based upon, is that your? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a John's question.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referencing, but, um. To, to build it, to build it over by the library is about a sixteen percent increase in cost. And I can explain that to you.
Sure.
Uh, because adjacent to a building, I'm running two circuits and Tony, you will get this. I'm running two circuits off an existing panel to get lights. Into the building. When I move it over there, I now have to run the electric power off of. Fifth Avenue Forest, underground. Twenty, thirty thousand dollars. To be able to get that electric there and set a separate panel and then be a separate builder. In addition to that, there was some additional cost done, built in A D A parking, we looked at that on Forest Avenue. With A D A sidewalks coming to the restaurant. And so the sixteen percent increase was done by a third party estimator, Paul Gary. Does a lot of great work for Universal Studios, it wasn't anything that we contrived or anything else. We said if we're gonna build it here, how much is it, if we're gonna build it here, how much is it? And he came back with the estimate and the additional cost associated with doing it. So, no, I, I don't know if that's in your packet, maybe it is, um, on the merit, so.
Well, that wasn't the question, the question was, well, how did it go from four ninety in December to three something?
I, I, I don't know that answer, I don't.
And I, I, I don't think it. Like, I think what?
We were at, we were at three eighty three on the original. To be by the town offices or town hall and it was sixteen percent increase to put it over by. And, you know, that's just true cost, that's, this is what you guys have to make and. Third party costs.
Pay your money, make your deals.
Exactly. We're just trying to give you guys information.
Yeah, I agree.
I, you know, so we're right, but I'm just saying both of them are hundred then. That option, right? How many, there's already two mini fast spots open. There are eight. There's two mini fast spots already open there, there are eight. Well, on Forest.
On Forest, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, you just, if you have to put your side on, say, in, to me.
We'll have to do it closer.
But listen, we're not gonna interfere that way. It's sixty percent different. You guys are, you know. So. I, I still, I still, thirty days is.
And summer.
I think it's all a sport. For, for, um, how it's called. The one, you know, we've been assuming. So thirty days for the price. And thirty days for the price and then you still, if you've got two hearings, uh, couple of committees.
Bring the price back to us.
The base hanging there. Yeah, okay. Alright, so basically what we're asking staff to do is bring us a price on the. Alternate location by the library, forced at that, with the same personnel. With all of the A D A requirements, the A D A lighting requirements.
It respects that we are against you, the men's women and nothing above that. Interesting.
Right. It did have to be one loss, why rather than this one? Yeah, and that will actually do it this Saturday, but, you know, how many toilets, how many? That's how it's happening. But. Most people are. First of all, does council agree on twenty December?
I think mostly, but I think most people that are talking would rather have more gay sex bathrooms than the men's and women's, which may be a cheaper comp. Because.
The year that's when you're wanting to run with one toilet and it's burned, like, it's off. Um, and.
Well, if I need to move on, you've scared it just in different footprint, then you put that, different design. Yeah, you do that, I agree, I, I don't know, I don't know. No, I am. I'm not this kind of. If you're, I don't know, like, over, already, I'm looking at it. Alright, so. So, I, council didn't agree on the thirty day or. Second location by the library, same footprint.
And is that, is that a problem, is that a problem, so you needed sixty days? And I forgot that.
No, if we get the, I mean, if the cost comes in at six percent over what it was supposed to be over here. Then, I mean, I should remember that, it said it would be a nonstarter, yeah, but I'm not. Is that a nonstarter for everybody else? And then. I mean, I can get two separate estimators to give us the cost.
Well, what was the cost that John got from this third party now that says it's only sixteen percent more? Was it based on the same footprint design? Like, do you already have these numbers?
It was basically taking the existing design that we had, shifting it over to the library site, and that is the revised number, which. Was about a sixteen percent increase in budget, just based on running the additional electrical tree trimming. All A D A parking.
Okay, so isn't that what we, we, right?
So hang on, so let's see, we drive machines, okay. John, six year or one six?
Sixteen percent one six.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's a, that is a good, that is a good clarification, Jim.
He's getting there, for sure.
And we took the exact same design and just shifted it over. And I will tell you, I mean, I know there's discussions about reducing the number of toilets and everything else. I mean, that's an option that you guys can do. Uh, the bathroom was denied specifically based on potty parity, right code for certain event sizes. And so that's how we came up with the thought, so.
Well, we don't, well, we don't know, um, right, me again, went wrong. We, we don't know whether it fit there, we don't know whether it go there. Um, I'm not saying it won't, but.
Yeah, there's a little due diligence.
We could say, go for it, and then you could have to come back and say, well, does it fit?
Well, and you know, there's a little due diligence for that location, um, and we're gonna have to do what we've done in the past. There, there's probably gonna be some major limbs that will have to be trimmed on that live oak and we'll probably have to do some root training to be able to do it. Um, so those are all the conversations. Very important, and maybe, maybe the solution is to have conversations with those that are involved. Out there in the next thirty days, I think we know budgetarily where we are, we know the plan. I think that's all resolved, it's just a matter of degree application at this point.
Well, let me ask you anything, John, did you do a photo review on that location, that's what I'm.
We did. And with Mark Jones. With Mark Jones. And he was the one that suggested having the two additional paving spots. On the far closest corner as opposed to far away. So what we were doing was looking at proximity apartment that we have within. The closest proximity with A D A sidewalks coming to the building. It's been fully vetted. Both budgetarily and also architecturally.
So it's, it's, if it's fully vetted architecturally, it's fully vetted. From a cost standpoint, code, like. He's not moving on split.
Uh, we, we've done the estimate in anticipation of the meeting, third party. And, um.
I can see that, we have it here.
It's in your agenda packet.
I, wait, no, I, I understand that.
There's.
But I just wanna make sure.
Happened to this, so you didn't take just.
No, I think you're on the record, so. You know, we'll get.
Are you allowing to speak?
We'll get there, let us get there. Alright, so.
So then you're saying the three should left the tree board. Go ahead and take it before we. Maybe the decision of the workshop, it gets, it's not yours, what, what you want to come back to, thirty days, we already have.
That's what I think, you're gonna come back with the same thing in thirty days, and maybe it's five hundred and fifty thousand plus sixteen percent, or maybe it's.
And then maybe a little.
We're not just gonna quit as you go out and market it, but. There's still gonna be a difference. I don't know if the difference is insurmountable, as I was saying, so. But you better have those other conversations with your committees and see if that's. Like, get those considerations, uh, in terms of the treaties and, and things like that, and I don't. Uh. Are gonna get a bill.
Yeah, um, as far as relocation, I don't think H P B is appropriate since it's not. That's what I mean, the more committees go, it's the longer it's gonna take.
It's really true, it's great, and whether it'll, whether it really, you know, stake it out and make sure it really, you know. And debate it, it's all that, you know, but I always think that it is wise to speak it out.
Yeah, and then.
And then have a workshop.
Cause sometimes when people see it. They're like, oh, that's not what I envisioned.
Well, and again, my, my fear is that.
Yeah.
Once I hold those public workshops, the people on forestry that are gonna have the same. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to find a location for the, the dumpsters right now.
I get it.
And they're not happy with looking at dumpsters, how happy are they gonna be looking at restaurants? So.
He said the big concern of mine is.
I, I think we shouldn't get ahead of ourselves right now in tonight's meeting about what those residents think, I mean, I spoke with the Spears, Renee was here. Um, and I've also spoke with Sue Ellen Doby, and they were all part of ones who came out against the pavilion, so that's three of them, one of them was here tonight. And I know Joan has actually reached out to another school that I'm not sure the name of, that lives directly behind here. So that's four neighbors within two blocks and there's only about eight properties, so that's four. I know that house catty corner here is a rental. And I know the family who's renting it, so I'm not sure what the landlord's opinion of it is. And obviously the renter isn't going to be there long term.
Yeah, I'm just.
So, I mean, I think we can reach out to them and get that input, and I think if we get tree boards input. I mean, they might say, you know, if we get a little five feet this way, six feet this way, what's the least impact to the trees? And we've already, I mean, I've already walked this with four of the tree board members out seven, so. Back in November, you know, to discuss with them what they thought of alternate locations because it, it was already coming up then. So I think once we have tree board, look at it, if they're input, which they're gonna at least have preliminary plan that has already on the agenda for Thursday. So that's pretty quick turnaround time for that. Then if we do a charrette or you stake it out, my recommendation would be. You know, to stake it out in May for summer breaks for school, because we're gonna have a lot of people leaving town. If we get a general idea or general size, whether it's this plan and let people see that.
I mean, I don't feel that, when you say charrette, like, walk in the, walk in the project, I, I don't.
Because I mean, you have to have the, the project, I'm just saying, stake it out so that they can come, I see our own.
I'm just saying, I'm just swearing by. But I just think, like, we have to, like, stop waiting for this one.
No, I don't think so, I think just stake it out so that people can come see it on their time. And then we have a strategy to use it, and then we can just let people know that it's out there and stated. And people can come take a look at it and get feedback, or letting them for the, so they already looked at it. For Tom.
You vote to table or like?
We're just, we're just dealing with the phase one now, right?
Yes.
Cause we have, we have a motion.
They have to stop phase two separately if we want to, I know.
If you're, if you are going to reconsider what it was that. Councilmember Haynes was bringing up this evening, yes, I think you should say that you wanna look at that again. In thirty days or sixty days, as you were talking about before, I think you should definitely put that back on the agenda because. If you have a motion to reconsider what Robert's rule says, if it's noticed, then you'll need a majority vote of the council. If it's not a notice motion, then you need a super majority vote to make a change to something that was done in the past.
So it was noticed. So, you know, regular, already. Um, so then, but just to clarify, so we're gonna. We'll go ahead and vote on that rescension or we're gonna vote to table?
That's up to the, that's up to the council.
And we're not talking to you.
But I think we have to close out this meeting. Cause we've got a motion in a second, cause we gotta withdraw. The motion makers favorable. Trying, uh, rescension. Means council person data, right? Or not, it's person, it's person. And. So we'll, we'll table this item. You have a motion for that?
I would suggest it, we'll keep it all clean and neat.
So a motion to table the rescen, rescinding of the motion comes December tenth. Uh, and so the next month's meeting, that would be June, the June council meeting, um. To come back and question that.
Emotion, counsel, second. Then, Tom, this is your moment. Uh, if you didn't vote, who else person needs?
I. I'm.
Hi. Thank you, boss.
We still need to talk about?
What do you wish?
Uh, the phase two or not?
For the present review. Uh, telling it with John, is it possible to. Tomorrow or Thursday morning to take a stake in the ground showing the edge of the property line with the library? Just so everybody had a reference going, okay, the building can't get any closer than this. That, that, it has to give you a better perspective, okay, this is our starting, is how far. Is it maybe further away from the building than we know? And think a lot.
Hundred percent.
And that's be their property line, but is there any rule also from Brad, I would wonder in terms of. If we have a setback in addition to that. if we have a setback in addition to that? Not working.
Well, I, I can't let Brad answer that question, but I think many more than a day, cause I think there's a lot of new diligence that we have to do now that we know that it's not going where it's going. You know, where's the septic tank for the library, where are the property laws for the library, where could this thing best be laid out? I think that's really what the next thirty days should be for us. Um, now that we understand the touch of Austin fact, and now that we have some direction. Um, we have to do a little due diligence to stop, and so if you could allow us the next thirty days to kind of dive in a little deeper now that we know that that may be a potential new location. Cause it may not even work there, the library is still a drain venture, I don't know.
On an area we don't know was property now.
Yeah, so I mean, we may even have to survey that, but I mean, we could probably get a pretty close proximity based on some of the G I S and the, you know, some of the stuff that we have, just to give an indication, but you know, we'll be with, yeah. Due diligence, we gotta go through. And it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
If we need to get them thirty days, and we come back and it's tabled, then we still need work, you just retable it.
But come. Well, it's. You're very good on the.
That's right. Yes. I, uh, I say six years, the great example. We'll just take.
Anything else, I'll bring it up. Um, Brad, did you have a comment, sir?
I was just, I was just gonna confirm that, no, there wouldn't be setback standards, cause it's a public park facility and you as council will determine its locations. There's no going except up to.
Oh, alright. Alright, let's see, that's fine. Next up, two minutes. You have, I'm gonna have one, two, three sets of, uh, John council meeting is February eleventh, March twenty sixth, twenty five, it's a actual, it's a precon meeting. Um, actually, there's more, February twenty sixth, twenty five. And, yes, yes, there is. February twenty eighth, March nineteenth, seventeenth, twenty five, March twenty sixth, twenty five. Council meeting, um, ten, through all of these, one item, what you need for that is necessary. There are many, also. I don't approve all sets, council person, that is, second, person Williams. Again, voting with council person.
I have a special comment, I guess, but Madison, uh, he's not here. Um, but there was one, um, meeting that I was at that wasn't on there and a couple of other things I ordered, but I think they were considered in small enough areas that it didn't matter, I'm sure. Yeah, one was about it, one was over there. One, I then, what I. Terrible to say. Uh, yes, I do have some phone call. So the one meeting that I was attending was February twenty eighth, virtual. Uh, West Second Avenue precon meeting. But it was all online.
It, it said you were.
It says I wasn't, and I wasn't.
You didn't, you were, okay. Alright, so, let's just, okay, let's make a note in my correction.
Voting to approve all sorts of units within the. Section.
So, okay. So that's amended. That's, that's a good. So we'll leave out February twenty eighth and twenty twenty five, alright, uh, beginning voting with council person needs.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, and we can get with, uh, do with the, we can be, we can be, will you follow up with her on it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up is contracts and agreements, this is approval of memorandum of understanding, King John Armstrong and the town of Windermere. Do you have a presentation on this at all?
Well, not a presentation, I had a couple of conversations with John Armstrong relative to the maintenance map. Um, we had a conversation today to where if you approve the maintenance map, which is just going from the asphalt south and the asphalt east. Um, he's wanting to go ahead and quitclaim that to the town, because you know, we have the script of easement rights, we have all sorts of other rights, so we can just go ahead and do what we want, but I mean, we like to work with the neighbors.
I appreciate that.
Um, so the M O U was mostly, hey, if we do this, here's protections for the arborists, lighting, um, the maintenance of the right of way. Um, so I would suggest that we approve the M O U with an addition that whatever square feet he quitclaims to us, that can be used for if he wants to develop his property later on as far as floor area ratio, impervious surface ratio.
It doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt, and he, he's agreed to that. Um, and then, you know, had a little draft it up. And there was a discrepancy between like the square footage and the resolution, uh, versus, I think he.
February eleventh.
So the, the area, I don't know what you call the area, the, it's shown in red on the maintenance map, it's a little swoosh area. That area is eight hundred and ninety-eight square feet. And we had a discrepancy in there based on what we understood the surveyor said the square footage was versus what it was the town actually needs, so the town only needs the eight hundred and ninety-three square feet. So that needs to be, that, that's changed from what, what it was.
Yes.
And one other thing, yes, eight hundred and ninety-three, I, I already did the quitclaim deed memorandum of understanding, I, I, I finished it and cause I, there was a lot of moving parts today, and I wanted to make sure you had everything in front of you if you needed, so I do have that in front of me. One other thing, though, that I understand that Kim Lee Corn needs is a five foot easement around the maintenance map area, which is just gonna be temporary for construction and grading. And, uh, Robert did talk to John about that, John Armstrong about that as well, and he was okay with that. So that's, we added that to the M O U too.
So all of those things are in the final document?
Yes.
Okay. So council approves item one, B one.
Not in your package, though, maybe.
Not in your package, that you had.
Yeah, I'm happy to hand it out to you right now, if you wanna.
Let's just take it quickly.
Take a quick look at it, okay.
And I want to, um, specifically send our appreciation to John Armstrong for working with the town on this. It's important, he's just today, as I was driving through their that stop sign, even at four o'clock, that actually all way up past the school. You know, which is a waste of energy, taking time, and it's, it's not saying that most school either street. Certainly, this, uh, this.
And Mayor, this was gonna save your town quite a bit of money, because if the town had to repair the official maintenance map to be recorded in the public records, that's a costly item.
Well, I've had several conversations with John too, he's been, we're gonna have to go over it, and you, um, open to the state, they have to, so I have a couple of, like, to, maybe that happens. Absolutely. Much appreciation to staff and. Alright, council, looking for a motion to approve this. Especially proof, council person needs, second, council person David. Any last questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing that, we begin voting, council person's duty.
Aye.
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 M O U, uh, passes unanimously, thank you. Next up is the approval of the maintenance map and resolution twenty twenty-five, national two, for the main street, Main River Road, round the dock.
And Mayor, since you're not doing the maintenance map any longer, I would suggest you change the motion now to, to approve a quitclaim deed from Mr. Armstrong to the town of Windermere, and I understand from, from our books at Ray Robinson, it'll take a couple hours to prepare, maintenance to prepare.
Right. So this is a motion to approve the quitclaim deed from John Armstrong to the town of Windermere for the property necessary for the main street from Windermere, round the dock. So, so, and that is second Williams. Been voting with council person's duty.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council. Next up is consulting agreement with the town of Windermere and, um, Frank W. Chase Enterprises LLC, um, selection committee recommend this approval, council, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, council person David. Second.
Second.
Second, council person Williams. Any questions?
Just some comments, I spoke with, uh, Robert, the only, um, concern I had was on the agenda item to have is annual salary, this contract we have monthly stipend, but it wasn't listed with part of the hours. Um, I would even, I would even rate. I'll give a lower than, deliverable.
Yes, we, we talked about that and we'll enter into a letter of agreement, which would be somewhat of an addendum to this contract. Or is minimum amount of hours per week, what should be the hourly rate? And that'll be thirty hours a week.
You don't use all of the. Find somebody, and I stopped working. Alright. You're a good one. Hey, additional, uh, concerns, council. Seeing that, we begin voting with council person needs.
Aye.
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 Ayes.
Aye. Thank you, council. Next up is the school resource agreement between Orange County Public Schools and the town of Windermere. Um, staff and myself and chief recommends approval on this, and it's a long road. Anything you wanna add, chief, before we approve?
No, sir, I said, thankfully, the same as far as our responsibilities, we were just in the relationships, like, sort of, say, the act will be something more of a percentage, so it's a shared responsibility. Which, you know, state has more allocation, we'll get more money, state doesn't, we'll make very much sense.
Yeah, I think, um, it would be pretty clear to the school, like, that we had uh, lunch the other day, and she, I think she saw a different side of it a little bit. Something, and, and, and I want to be clear too, that in terms of all of this, all we all we ever want to do is, is, is tax period here, like, the students and the taxpayer. For being very personal, but actually, great, no, and this is a lot of people realize this, it's a, it's a mandate from the state to the school board. Like, there's quite a significant gap between what it costs to provide a skilled and professional school resource officer versus what it needs from the school board, it's the whole set service, so it's a significant, uh, really. Alright, um, motion to approve, council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, council person needs, so, second. Any questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing that, we begin voting, council person's duty.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council, I appreciate all staff that worked on, a bit after the tax period.
Oh, Mayor, and I have the, I have the final copy right here, so I'll get, I'll just show you the signature. I'm sure, they got that one right then.
Next up, item five, this is sidewalk repairs, Precision Sidewalk Safety Company. Uh, Park Avenue, from town limits to a wire route. Staff recommends approval, council, further for motion. Voting to approve, question approved, council person David. Second, council person David. Questions, council? And voting, council person needs.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Next up, couple of items. So it is that fun time of year. What could you think about? We do some council liaison assignments, so if you're like.
Oh.
I'm gonna ask that, council, do, I think, like, I think one of the, one of the assignments, the guarantee is to decide on one, so, so, um, I think personally that I received a lot of good feedback from all the committees that have heard of it, um, all of your liaison assignments, all of your assignments with staff. I believe that it's assignment as bad as we are, and continue on with the progress that we've made over the past twelve months. Okay?
The only thing, yes, it's not, I'll be able to attend that, that facing meetings.
Oh, that's right, you're gonna.
I don't hope we're attending there, and so I'll be thinking, I'll have another location.
So now that I, um, have been traveling such. Thank you. Next up is our town manager evaluation. Council, um, appreciate the time that you took to evaluate Robert's, um, performance. School is far excellent. Maybe she all that love that is for the town, as well as the acceptance and utilization of any structural criticism that we have. Then, then a, uh, very successful, one almost a few years. Appreciate continuing that, I've made a recommendation for his contract. Since I find that matrix. Yeah, yeah. If, if you're a hundred and thirty pages.
It was a long, and just wanna clarify, did you mean linear park as one there? That what you, you.
What did you say?
You can find here on, the other way, it's not linear park.
Yeah, we're.
I, I saw Robert talking about some.
It started off as, it started off as linear park.
Okay.
What did it start off as? Linear, yeah, we call it linear park until, until all respects to a property for, for family. And that's how. So, so, uh, probably some people do know this, but the, the whole, one of the biggest people I have on the council was to be a linear park, so. We're almost there. A, a, a lot.
There's one, make it sound.
A lot of work. So, um, so I've reviewed consideration, I'm recommending a three percent pay increase as well as an additional forty hours vacation. Work. We vote on that tonight, Robert, or will do your contract?
Uh, you just vote on it and.
I'm sorry.
You, you would just vote on it and then sign the minute contract.
Vote on it, alright. Um, looking for a motion to approve this recommendation, so, for Roberts. Just for clarification, so the the salary and number of hours of vacation total is what? I can't say that.
I didn't tell you.
It, it would be one seventy-five and change, uh, for salary, and then it would be one sixty plus forty, so two hundred hours of vacation. Which, that's a, I think I've told you all, I don't think I've ever used that max vacation time or comp time or flex time, so.
Looking to approve, motion approved, council person David, second, second, council person David. Questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing that, we begin voting with council person's duty.
Aye.
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 Here's the end, so. Thank you, Robert, for all your service, and to the rest of the staff that will be in here tonight. Appreciate everybody with all their good input and, uh, working, uh, through all those fun hearings tonight. A couple of quick things, I should remind everybody that, uh, Dan mentioned earlier, the armed forces day on the seventh of the week at, uh, ten o'clock, so right here in town hall. Memorial Day, um, will be honored at ten AM right outside with the Rotary. Um, on Memorial Day, and then also we got a really nice you know, it's always funny, the events, I think, are, are not sure how everything goes, sometimes you're the ones who go, eventually, we did the Time Castle opening and we watched those kids, look at, look at everything that came out of the Time Castle and the whole story behind it, and uh, having a former mayor's daughter here to be business owners from fifty years ago, as well as the kind of the, uh, proclamation and items request from the citizens of Windermere. Um, something that was written in nineteen seventy-five that, as I read it, literally felt like it was pulled from today's headlines. So there's a good perspective there, um, it was, it's a really beautiful ceremony. We're going to, uh, see if we get upset with you, but we're gonna, we're gonna put another one in the ground, we weren't gonna do it, but I think when we saw you know, I was really shocked, people seemed really into it. And, um, and, and it was a lot of fun, I think we can do a good job with it, so in the, uh, in the newsletter article that'll be coming out, I asked everyone what they would want to see in the Time Castle for the, the one hundred and fifty of, uh, I think that you were really telling.
Yeah, you, you started with the nail box.
Yeah, we're gonna do a lot of different classes, it's a tiny, you know, and, and, yeah, we're gonna build something in here, here's shed.
Oh, it's funny, yeah.
Um, and then we're gonna, like, put a new box for something, so, it's funny, there's, there were several stories about that, but you know, how it's done in different places, how Disney, because their Time Castle, they do a lot of, probably, numerous of them.
Age of Centennial meetings, meeting on that next week on.
Yeah. Perfect, so we'll, we're gonna have some cool, cool different ways to do it, and some input as to what should go in there.
And something you know you can.
And I think it's also right, something you know you can open, have some fun with it. It, I, I thought it was a really nice. Everybody, like the whole food truck's got a quiet, everybody came for it. When you put it, oh, it would be there, well, that as well, that is down. Fifty years from now.
He's saying science, no, but I'm still, you're the knowledge, I was, that's up in our arms.
Modern science now, so there's. Good, all right. Hey, I don't think you have time to learn, it's what you've been doing.
Uh, yes, we're, we're a historic preservation board. They've had, did submit their resignation and board chair during, so always said, anybody for.
So for. Three, four, we have the ordinance, we'll be going to BRB in this next week. And then come back to us in June, whatever BRB's comments are. And then we've got our meeting of our authority about the Thursday. And then the staff meeting. Met April for the last time during the meeting for the month of May. And it was just pretty much basically your stuff for that, so we won't really even till September, I think, but I don't think there's one, obviously. We got our chain of race advisory board meeting, and actually next Monday. And then, yeah, the thing of the dial sort of, and the store board meeting, because they have the town stuff on the agenda. And I do have somebody in town I talked to that's.
Appreciate it. I guess I'm not the biggest on this, but I don't see the others, you think these go to another, so what is the next step for this, I need to see. I think generally on something like this, we, unless these are all good things that. Sometimes we walk by something that you don't see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We will take that. I will say, Stephen, I really appreciate that. I love when people not only point something out, but they bring a solution.
First of all, thank you for the photo compliments and the grease today, so. I guess it's my turn to pay over at the library. The second thing I wanted to say is, you know. We're having so many discussions over that. That's good. It's not fine, it's not anything else, so if we're having long discussion about bathrooms. Then these staffs, then they're gone. And so. It, it doesn't really frustrate me on, on that, because I know everybody's hashing about it, but. I mean, I'd rather be talking about bathrooms than. Something really, really bad, so. You know. That, that's a testament to council and staff, so I really appreciate that.
Please pardon me.
And please pardon me, so.
The thing that we. Robert's your point. Often, so people need to worry about little things with this. Not worry about our kids getting abducted, and that's a good thing. The. And it's something we should never forget, because. I've been living in different places, that is not something we always have. But I do think that. It's mine. That we do. We want to hear, oh, we want a response. Don't, it, it does get frustrating. Circle back on things sometimes, it's not my criticism, it's just I wish. Not exactly sure. You know, I think one of the questions was that Joe brought up earlier. How do you educate people who don't. Do anything to learn about what's going on? And. I've been at these conversations a lot, and my frustration is you. Do much as give as much as expect. We're very fortunate for the. I think that my expectation, that's, and your expectation, and everyone else's, is people. Doing a considerable amount of time, think things better, and to make things operate as smoothly as we possibly can. You know, I don't know how much we can do for people who want to do some of that in parallel. Some people are just. It's amazing how many people stopping at one, dot, or other, that's the food trucks in the city. I don't know what did you do, just keep doing what you're doing. Because you're thrilled, happy. Excited about what the town has off, now, that doesn't mean that you're perfect, right? Doesn't mean that you can't do things. Better than you don't occasionally make a misjudgment or error correction. But, you know, I don't know if we can educate everybody unless we all walk around, make sure we educate everybody, you are a hundred and ten people. You know, when everybody takes a sector, but I mean, I think what some of you guys learn to do, you know, is that that takes a lot of time and dedication. So, you know, listen, it's always something to talk about, it's always something that we can improve on. I don't know how to make sure that everyone knows everything. Into today's world, you think it would be Easter, it's not like it's, or maybe the, maybe Sunday dinners are related. I mean, it's still your life, it's all right. We do appreciate everyone.
Sure. I'd like to remind town council and everyone here this evening that we do have two projects currently going on in town. I understand we're showing plans for those as we move through those projects, but. It's great that they're actually turning around and making progress, so obviously we have old dirt mated from ninth to tenth. And we also have West Second Avenue taking place right now. We recently just released the bids for the Bessie and Butler Stormwater Improvement Project. So we hope from bringing that, bringing those two back to you at some point for approval, and we'll be getting to turning around or no, which is quite, is important to have Mr. Chase. On board. We talked about the linear park, ward trail, and the pedestrian bridge. We do hope that we're very close with the OT to be able to start fitting that out sometime in mid-June, hopefully. And due to the requirements of that, we think we'll be back to you with approval, your approval on a, hopefully a contractor sometime in August, if those prices come in correct. The reason it takes a little bit longer is that Department of Transportation actually has to review. The bid submittals before we bring it to you for approval, they have to approve first, so it'll be a little bit more of a process for that one. But I'm excited to say those things are happening, so that's great news. We're working with the legacy benches, that's been a huge success. A lot of people are liking those benches and wanting to have them, so that's providing us infrastructure in the parks, which is, which is great, much needed transition of, of infrastructure, which is necessary. We will be coming back to also with potentially new lighting for both tennis courts, we've received three quotes on that, we'll take that to Parks Committee, but that may be back before Town Council here shortly as well. So we are making huge progress in public works and parks and recreation. Also, we have quotes out for some restoration activities for the Cal Palmer and the schoolhouse, so. We're making progress on all those as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Work, all that is really exciting, I know we've got a. Lot of projects that we're gonna launch out here, it's gonna be a cool fun. And so we, we.
For you.
Another one to hit, right? Then we got it all out of the way.
As a reminder, we are getting started with fourth and nine only, we didn't receive the funding for that, so we'll be going through the process of, while doing the. Assessment with the state on whether or not we can meet the BCLs, but that project did, did get a finalized contract.
And we were excited about the roundabout.
Yeah. It's new sidewalk over there, way down.
Thank you. Man, it's a crowd of people. Council, sorry, we took a Disney night, I heard money.
I know, thank you.
Congratulations, Robert, and I think we've heard enough from you tonight.
Be quick, hope that I know I'll be on soon, like your ticket's coming up, so make sure you reset for your seatbelt in the next few weeks. Also, one, just let you guys know, we started a program today, military designer, if you think about like a set of nineteen profiled. That's called court recon, we're the first complete safety team in the entire country to that, we'll be deploying that. Today, you guys want to come to our training next Tuesday, we started this afternoon, we'll finish up next Tuesday. I think it's pretty amazing, I'll get a little bit more about that later on, I'm pretty proud about, of that, and I think it's gonna, I think it's a big thing for law enforcement, that's, that's really gonna kick off, so. Good news about that, anything, a little bit about, about what Robert was saying earlier, I spent about a month ago, I spent a long weekend in Guadalupe. Up in Cronya, to the top of the mountains, where police officers do not go. It's run by gang members out there, my biggest, my life's biggest concern was how many kids were gonna bring home? Don't bring any kids home, I said I can't make that comment, but. You know, coming back in here, we're extremely blessed with our relationship with our residents and our police officers up there, and that was actually one of my mission. Trips up there, we're staying engaged with police officers in the community, who do not go to the community at all. A different six officers in that community was pretty interesting up there, so. It's a little bit perspective, you don't have kitchens, you have open-air kitchens, you have no dirt, you have no floors, you have dirt on the floors. And you have kids and. Company and people that were up there that were, had absolutely nothing but opened their doors, opened their hearts to us, and. Bent over backwards to give us anything that's pretty good. And I'm just, I've come back, I came back, I was, you know, very humble about that, so it's a world perspective then.
Great perspective. We're bold to be, I say. If there's nothing else, with a goodie order, we will adjourn our council meeting at eight here in two.